Twenty twenty five, five P M. We'll start out by saying the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Well, that's Councilman Townsend if you'd set him the case for it.
We pray with the pleas, the gracious heaven and the father, we thank you for this day. All days are good days to go, especially when we're here with you. We thank you for our opportunity to serve our county, serve the citizens of this county, the Lord rest his, guide us today to help us do what's best and the decisions that we make in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Before approval of agenda requires motion.
Mr. Chair, before we approve the agenda, I had a conversation with Mr. Bose, he had made our meeting the other day and I talked to him yesterday and he said he hadn't had a chance to get an ordinance together. Is that right, Mr. Bose? On about the business license?
We're having an ordinance together. The council asked me three questions.
Yeah, yeah, so you don't have to write.
I don't have in writing to answer those three questions yet. I think I know the answers, but I don't have it written.
And then mind your conversation just that, the council, you know, you told him. You stated that we'd have to come up with somebody to minister if you did create a business license. You know, somebody to be over, keep up with and all that kind of stuff, like codes on, maybe somebody not that, you know.
That's correct. I think, yeah, that's right. We have to be ministered, yes.
And you also stated that this couldn't really, wouldn't probably be effective next April if we did pass something out.
Well, it would take a few months to be in fact, wasn't it? Yes.
Then you got new April, you said April.
Well, April is when they issue the new license.
That's correct.
So it probably wouldn't be effective until April. That's correct, isn't it, Mr. Mayor?
That's correct.
That's right.
So I'm asking, I mean, I know you're gonna say it's first reading, but I'm asking the council, let's hold until we can, you know, make sure we find out who's gonna ministry, because right now we don't have a code enforcement and we got county attorneys, not county attorney, but attorneys all over the county calling us, called a code enforcement. We don't have a code enforcement person right now. We got real estate people calling, so they can't get their stuff done. Private property, they can't get their stuff done. So I say before we start the process of the business license, we need to get us a code enforcement person that's gonna be in the office and keep up with it. That'd be my thing. Now, I ain't trying to put it off, we're just trying to, you know, to make sure we get it all cleared up, you know what I'm saying, because, you know, I think everybody tell you they're getting calls from stuff that's been going on, but we don't have a code enforcement guy at this time, only in-house, you know. And that would be my thing, is, you know, I'd like to make that to a motion, we just table that for the time being, you know.
Wouldn't you do that when you got to the item?
No, that's why I wanted, I wanted, when you said approve the agenda, so I wanna take that.
You wanna take it off the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, take it off the agenda, yeah.
Got a motion, need a second?
I see it.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I wanna say something.
Yeah. This is just first reading by title only. I agree we might not be where we need to be just yet to administer or take care of it. But we don't have to do these every month. We can, we can have the first reading, I had a second reading for four months. It don't have to be sequential meetings to then spread that out a little bit.
Is that correct, Mr. Bose? That's correct. We ain't gonna come up next month trying to pass a second reading, you know what I'm saying?
We don't, we don't have to. We can. Sure, we can bring it before the council, I think, but I believe we can skip and go along as long as we want to. It doesn't have to be sequential.
I just hate to vote on something. I know we've had one apology, one ordinance in the path we looked at, I understand that. But this new stuff that we've asked about, just like people's got businesses in their backyard and stuff, or little farming park businesses. When you put this business license in effect, you're gonna affect those people, you know, if they're in a residential area or something.
Well, it should grandfather pre-existing businesses. New businesses might should be a different thing.
Mr. Bose, our conversation yesterday, I asked you, I said, if somebody got, just say a garage in the backyard and it ain't, it's in the wrong zone, and the first thing you told was, you said that's illegal anyway, you know, didn't you tell me that?
If, if someone has a, is operating a business.
Cause I was on.
That's not a permitted use, and a permitted use can be a permitted use, could also be something that's a non-conforming use. Non-conforming use is where you have to put the zone code. So if it's not a non-conforming use, grandfathered in, and if it's not a permitted use under the code, then issuing a business license could be, in my words, problematic. Could be a problem.
What you heard them say, grandfathered in?
If it falls under that code, but if it don't fall under that code.
Or non-conforming.
Another thing I think we're worried the problem is, when you start issuing a business license, they gotta be handicapped and successful when they go out there, you know, for their check and zone.
No, that, that, that's not all that, that's, you don't do that to do all that. That's for a, a business that's got occupancy retail.
Well, that's what I'm saying is, they're, they're.
I mean, they supposed to have that regardless.
They ain't supposed to have retail in residential areas anyway.
But, but you get back to what you're saying, and what we're discussing now is the merit, whether we're gonna pass it. I think that's what we're trying to decide before we even put it on the agenda. I think having a first reading by title only, and I agree with you, if something I don't agree with, I don't have to vote for it. If something I do agree with or something like that, I can support.
It might facilitate, but I don't agree with it, and I think, you know, by us not having a clear reading of what it's gonna be, and like you say, we don't have nobody in place and, you know, to minister it. Till we get there, I think we need to, you know, before we start reading on.
I understand it, but there's a lot of things we'll be passing, and we had somebody there to take care of it before.
Now, just my opinion, I'm only.
If it was one vote, I would say no, but I mean, if you gotta have three reads, you got time to figure stuff out.
And a vote here.
Yeah, and a vote here.
And we don't have to have it next month. We can spread that out a little bit. That's just. You had a motion second, that's my.
We got, we got a motion in a second to remove it from the agenda. All in favor? Any opposed? I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make that motion.
Motion in a second.
I see it.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Five approval minutes, March twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, April fourteen, twenty twenty-five, workshop requires a motion.
Make that motion.
Got a motion in a second.
I'll second, those are together.
Yes, sir. All in favor? Any opposed? Ordinance, ordinancees, ordinancees. Six ordinance, number twenty-five oh one, second reading, an ordinance, an ordinance by Dillon County Council establishing rules and regulations as to waste tires. Requires a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion in a second.
I'll see it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seven ordinance, number twenty-five oh two, first reading by title only, an ordinance of Dillon County Council establishing local business license ordinance which shall require that persons engaged in or attempting to engage a business in Dillon County be required to pay an annual license tax and obtain a business license in which shall provide procedures related there to, requires a motion.
Make that motion.
Motion in a second.
I see it.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Number eight, ordinance, number twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five oh three, first reading by title only, an ordinance to amend chapters thirty-eight of the Dillon County Code of Ordinances so as to establish a nuisance ordinance to provide for the declaration of a nuisance by the county to set forth procedures related to the abatement of nuisances to provide for the enforcement of those wishes to be adopted and set forth in chapter thirty-eight of Dillon County Code of Ordinances related to nuisances. Requires a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion in a second, 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 any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Number nine, ordinance twenty-five oh four, first reading by title only, an ordinance to provide budget appropriation for county purposes in the county of Dillon in the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-six, and adopt and implement rates and fees for other tax purposes and county appropriation purposes to establish a tax millage to provide for the budget, requires a motion. Got a motion.
Thank you.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion?
Tim, this don't have no tax increase in it.
No, it doesn't.
Got a motion, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
And we need to, uh, look at next week having another budget workshop.
Number ten, recreational request, A, Arneeth B. Manning Scholarship Fund.
The Arneeth B. Manning Thirteenth Annual Scholarship Fund is musical, will be held May thirty, two thousand twenty-five, four o'clock three. Keynote speaker, teachers dolphins. Any requests and donations? Get the dollars, bro. Next one, is the East Regional, Regional Sapa, Sapa Lee in there asking for donations to help with their, um, expense for the, for the kids.
That Larry Drum, he helped me remind everybody that he has a building. I read Larry just called me right now.
Says male and female teams throughout North and South Carolina.
He a country lead there, that's Larry here.
That's all.
I'm beating up Cam.
Thank you.
Cam. Requires a motion.
Make that motion.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor? Eleven, emergency watershed protection.
Mr. Bose, I got a question. I got some money left in my, uh, recreation. Could I give back to another, transfer that to another council member or do they have something in there to the end of year? Now, Mr. Washington, I, I, my camp, my recreation money, could you transfer?
I don't think there's a provision to transfer it. You can spend it.
Spend it.
He can make a recommendation, you could agree with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, make it as they have.
Yes, can we spend it?
Captain Washington, make the motion.
Mr. Town, I owe you so much.
Washington can make a motion that you use your money and you agree with it.
Yes, I mean, you know.
I don't know how much you wanna give away now, but for another whole lot. I gotta give some away. Say anything, Bob, you need to do. Next month, okay. Same with you. Got two months.
Eleven, emergency watershed protection program, Shamika McCoy.
How you guys doing? What is the small on the, I'm Shamika McCoy. Uh, thank you all for having me. Um, I am originally, I'm in North Carolina, but I've been asked to come to North Carolina and South Carolina to just kinda do a brief overview of the emergency watershed protection program. I retired from the Air Force after twenty years, and so now I'm a farmer and I'm a partner with uh, N C L Jazzco and N R C S to kinda provide this information in this strength of, we're preparing for hurricane season and as you guys know, we have, you know, fires and everything that has gone around, so, um, I'm gonna try to be quick, but I'm used to like clicking my own slides. Uh, I don't like to do that by PowerPoint. The emergency watershed program is a federally funded, uh, program and it's used for, uh, post-disaster events. So obviously natural disasters, things that are out of our control as we continue to prepare, just like Herlaine, um, Hurricane Matthew, Hurricane Florence, things that has happened in the past. So this is part of the things that are authorized. Uh, anything that causes, um, that were disaster-related damages that caused threat to existing structures, city schools, you know, roads, you know, things that need repair, um, under that timeline, but just like anything, any federal funding, you know, it takes time, so, you know, hurry up or wait, so they'll take twenty-one to thirty years, um, in the timeline of everything happening, so. The application process, it is initiated by whoever has the authority, um, but it's a formal request to the, uh, South Carolina State Conservationist, uh, N R C S personnel. Um, what they'll do once you submit your request, within sixty days of the actual event, they'll send an engineering, uh, an engineer out to assess the, the property, the damage, and then they'll come up with a plan, and if it's approved, uh, that's when the project will start. This is just an example of what the letter will look like when you're submitting it. Uh, if there's anything that's large scale or if it's not, um, eligible, you can also request training, and then they'll come out and just kinda educate you on some of the things that you guys can probably do within your capacity based on the really, um, budget that you have. Uh, here are the requirements. So, just like any other government funding, uh, program, once you get your, uh, state allocation, um, funds, N R C S will support seventy-five percent of the funding, but you still, the city will be responsible for twenty-five percent of the, uh, funds, and that can come from your state, your local, however you guys wanna allocate those funds. And here's a timeline. I'd just like to show a brief overview because, you know, sometimes when you see things happen, we're wondering why it's not finished, but this is just a, a brief overview of from start to finish, depending on a year, up to three years, on getting that project done. And then here are some of the things that are, um, eligible. Um, this is not necessarily like a military town, but anything that is more milita- military buildings are not, uh, eligible. Anything that has been, um, fixed twice within the last two years, those are not eligible. Uh, any pre-existing damages, you know, self-explanatory. So, South Carolina, your, um, coordinator is vacant, so I did provide a, a number for North Carolina. Um, Jim, he's readily available with you guys in the event that you did need that assistance. North Carolina has stepped up for you guys. And then this is just a brief overview about N C L Jazzco, just to kinda give us like a little credibility of being here. And then, uh, the other slide is more some of the things that we have done in the past, more so like the resume and our values. Any questions for me?
Is there a certain allotment per state or minimum request amount or maximum request amount or?
No, um, just.
Sky's the limit.
The sky is the limit, but depending on the severity of the damages, and then obviously statewide, so if you wanna use your state funds or your city, you know, whatever it is that you guys hold on, uh, in regards to what prepared, obviously like if the school, something that's very important, uh, yeah, depending on the damages, it's kind of unexpected, so no dollar amount, just, just know that you'll be responsible for twenty-five percent of the project.
Responsible for twenty-five percent. Somebody, somebody comes judge whether it's worthwhile or not.
Yeah, they'll send an engineer that's assigned to, uh, from N R, N R C S, the center engineer.
So, we were, uh, to ask the administrator to write a letter to, on behalf of the city of Dillon. So we had discussed it with the mayor and the mayor was talking about making swamp watershed, and he said, we've got problems here with this, and we've got drainage or, uh, we've got flooding problems in Dillon. Could that possibly assist with something like that?
Not if it's something that's just currently going on, uh, that it been asked to, within sixty days you will fly through.
Within sixty days of what?
Of the natural disaster, of the disaster.
Of the disaster, it has to be a disaster, a hurricane.
Or, you know, once it was damaged, within sixty days of the damage, so, cause something has already been.
It's gotta be an active event that happens before it's been. Just, I'll refrain that, just, just don't ask the mayor now, he might use the same thing in sixty, sixty days after.
And it's June, July, you know, we're, we're preparing, yeah, so definitely wanted to provide this information now as we continue to prepare. Take good pictures of, you know, current buildings, and then that way there's a, you know, before and after so that they can assess the damages when they do center engineering, if there's, you know, businesses or, uh, companies, you know, have good record keeping, I guess, in some of the words.
Well, I'm sure the watershed been done before, because that was the best day to film a sale, but I don't know, but that's such a, that's one possibility, that's something that can happen. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Williams adoption of personnel policy. Requires a motion. Make that motion. I see it. Motion in a second, any discussion?
Everybody's gotta be, and I'm still have to be.
This is personnel policy.
But everybody can ask a question, but everybody, personnel, just like supervising somebody now, would that be grandfathered in or is that gonna change the personnel policy? Like if it's a conflict, like a husband and a wife or.
No, it's no.
All that be okay, be an imperative or nothing like that?
No, it's from here on. And you already, you already have a current policy that's in place, that might have some discussion about that.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Thirteen, adoption of Dillon County vehicle policy.
Make a motion.
Motion in a second. Got a motion in a second, any discussion?
Make Tim Donat, they be driving.
Yeah.
All in favor? Any opposed? Fourteen, approval pest control bid, requires a motion.
Mr. Chair, we had four bids on the, uh, pest control. Uh, the lug bid was, was Dodson's, uh, pest control at sixteen hundred and eighty dollars per month. And that's what we'd like to recommend.
Where they at, Tim?
They have a representative in Florence. They, they're all over the country.
What was the difference between them and, I think I said, and the Rocket? I know Rocket's got a bid in here.
Rocket's was about. Yeah, about two hundred dollars a month.
More.
But our Rocket, Rocket is just like Dodson now, they're, they're not just local, they're nationwide.
They have an office in here.
And Dodson may have one, I'm not sure.
Dodson have office in here.
I was just trying to keep it local.
I'll make a motion, we take.
Make a motion, accept lug bid. Got a motion in a second. Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Fifteen. Fifteen, approval of I T contract bid.
Mr. Chair, as you know, we put out for bids, the contract for I T, uh, we had, uh, I think it's ten bidders on the, on the project, uh, and you have there the list of all of them, where they located at, and the call for core management services. Danny's looked over those, he's here, if he can, he can answer questions probably better than I can, but as you see, they vary from amount to amount. What I'd like to recommend to council is that, if you look at these things, they weigh it per month, it's extraordinarily over what we can budget for. Uh, but we met with Lockstep, who already does our nine-one-one center, they put in a bid. We also, um, they also have been working with Danny now for about ten years or some other stuff. Um, and what I'd like to recommend is the option that we have to the right there of that they will put a staff person here that will work in the county, and then also if that person's out, they'll have backup for him coming in when he's maybe on vacation or she's on vacation. And that's at ninety-eight hundred and eight dollars and thirty cent per month.
Are we still gonna act as we advertise for the position?
We can, except we all.
So, you say Lockstep is fifty-two thousand dollars a month?
No, ninety-eight, okay, thirty per month. If they, if they would've, if they would've done what was.
So that's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year?
That's correct.
Okay, um, I'm concerned about that because if each department currently has, um, their own software, right? And Danny, correct me if I'm wrong, if something goes wrong in the treasurer's office or something goes wrong in the parpa court with their software, don't they have a one-eight-hundred or I T person in contact directly? Because we never had a contract for I T other than you, you know, hooking up computers and mouses and.
I do all the software installations, even for set numbers also, uh, whether it's at the, uh, jail, at sheriff's office, treasurer's office. I install it, get it configured, and then.
That's with assistance through their I T, the system software.
I do myself, I install it, they, I've worked and, um, they've shown how to do it. And then after that, then, uh, if there's any troubles, I take a look at it and then recommend whether or not I have to call that vendor to go, okay, there's some trouble. And I look at other computers also to determine, okay, well, if this person's having trouble, say the treasurer's office, as you had said, they're having trouble with that, does another computer have trouble with that? If not, okay, it's isolated to that one computer, and that way then I have to kinda like, through just logic and troubleshooting, just be able to tell that vendor, okay, I've got trouble with this one computer and nothing else. So, I mean, it deals with that person, whoever's assigned here, to know even that software. Each, as you said, each department, whether it's, uh, the registration, um, excuse me, at the parpa court, all of those departments have their own various softwares, and it is up to the I T person to know that software. How to install it, how to troubleshoot it, and how to know to look at other computers.
Yeah, because I have talked to some of the different people in the different departments as well, and they're saying that they contact, not throwing, not, not throwing shade, I don't throw shade, but they're pretty much saying that when things go wrong with their computer system, the vendor is contacting. And the vendor usually walks them through the steps of doing it because right now we currently don't have a contract. I don't know, Mayor, um, correct me if I'm wrong, do you guys have a contract with a I T company? And I contacted some other people that don't have contracts with a I T company. So I think that we should do maybe some type of service plan, and then maybe next year revisit this, and if we see that we, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a contract, or if we can just call in for service calls, and there's less than the contract, then we need to continue to call in for a service call. But if we run into an issue next year and our service calls outweigh the contract, then we say, okay, we need a contract. But to go in and just say, we're gonna spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on contracting with a company that we have never used, well, we used, well, as a county, we didn't have a I T contract. So it just don't make sense, when the sheriff department needs money, Marquita don't wants money, all the departments want money, we're gonna go spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on something that we currently are not using to start using. It don't make any sense.
Mayor, I'll say something else. Currently, right now, I mean, no matter what the department is, I install the equipment, I maintain the network and equipment constantly, every day. Even if I go on vacation, I carry my laptop with me to be able to log in, look at things, help an individual, or look at a network system. It's constant, it's not something that it would cost you more to call an individual in and look at something than it would be to have that person here all the time.
But we don't have issues all the time. A day may go by, we don't have any issues, a week could go by, we don't have any issues. I just don't think. Yeah. Well, we, we're not going to get into that portion of it, but.
Can you, Tim, probably can tell you this, what's the difference, I know a while back, everybody told us that we didn't need I T person, we could do it all on the computer. But now you throw the person in there, how much more would that person cost?
That, that's in this.
I mean, what's the difference if you didn't have it? I mean, I'm understanding probably the difference in it.
You, you still, you either gonna have to contract it where they'll put a person, or are you gonna have to hire a person?
Would it be cheaper for us to hire a person? Cheaper than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
In my opinion, when you figure in fringes and everything, in order to get a person, the skills that we need, I don't think so, and that's my opinion.
Hey, I say something again. Uh, currently, right now, and I've researched, to get a person that knows servers, switches, firewall, desktops, understands about software, you're gonna spend around ninety to ninety-five thousand dollars per year that knows all of that encompassing. That's about what the going rate is.
Would that be cheaper than what we're gonna hear?
I know, cause then you got insurance and.
And then you got.
The other thing else was about another thirty.
Yeah.
But when we were saying that we didn't need anybody, that's what we were saying before, we didn't need anybody.
Yeah, but I thought we were talking for you, you could handle all on the computer, you didn't have to have.
Yeah, that's what we were saying.
Well, let me, let's change that. You, 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 you would have a contract, you wouldn't have to have someone here, but you're gonna, you, you're gonna have to have someone come in at times. There'll be things that you can't do on the computer. Now, by having a person here, your response time's gonna be a lot quicker. This company's willing to put a person here, instead of having to call someone to come from Florence or Conway or Charlotte or somewhere like that.
What would be the contract if they didn't put a person and then, you know.
Do service calls.
Just do service calls.
Then you're gonna be paying for a service call per hour, by the hour.
It's gonna cost you more per hour.
But the paper they sent you.
We know Dillon is not that big too. We know Dillon is not that big to have a service call.
Is it worth it, how much difference in it is?
I don't care what y'all say.
In the contract that you, they sent back to you?
No, it's a lump sum. It's all tied together. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Would it be better? I know since Mr. Danny was hired, things have gone up. And, you know, you couldn't replace Mr. Danny while he's getting paid. Now, I agree with that with everybody in this town. But it would be better for this, you know, because we up here spending the citizens' dollars. Would it be better if taxpayers, would it be better if we advertised a little bit longer and asked Mr. Danny, would he stay a little longer to try to.
He can, he can.
I'm just thinking.
Well, I'm saying is, he's retiring, so he's got to be out.
Right, I've already filed for it.
Well, is it okay? If it would be okay if we reach out to other, you know, associations of the county, advertise it there, see if anybody like, with other counties might be retired and could come in a couple days a week and help us? You know, then we can have a hands-on with the person that's working on the equipment and stuff.
What's it you?
I know, but the thing is, it might be cheaper if you found somebody local like in Florence County, or you found somebody in Veniceville. I'm just reaching out to other counties. I don't think.
Or individual, contract out individual.
I don't think it was advertised enough. Well, Steve told me the other day, you know, we talking about we could get, what may be up for something down there.
Going to do something here.
I mean, I think it'd be better to let somebody like that do it than.
Big. The people that apply, they want to.
But they're working on a contract. Working on a contract.
About a hundred and twenty.
Twenty-four months.
Plus wherever you get, whether they're local or not. They're going to have to be certified. Uh, that's when I started, I had to be cleared through IRS and FBI as well as, um, the treasurer's office. I mean, had to be cleared, uh, full background checks, fingerprints and everything.
I think we could, you know. I think we could find somebody less than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, you know, and have it all. That way they work for Tim, because, you know, you hire a company. That's another job that Dillon County gave away that could, somebody could have got here in Dillon County. You know what I'm saying? They gave away another job, watch it down. Uh, we don't have a code enforcement, we don't have, now we don't have that. I had to pay him, he leave, we ain't going to replace him, he says. So everything will be somewhere else, you know. I said at least give it thirty more days to advertise it, just to see what pops up, you know? And then go from there. And advertise it. I know we had this discussion the other day. Put out there on the association what the range of salary is, you know, from. Because when you look there and they don't know what it is, you say, "Call in IT." If you say it's from ninety thousand to a hundred and twenty, or ninety to a hundred, you know, whatever, you know? That way they know what they're kind of looking at when they call you.
And it's the correct qualifications.
Yeah, how the correct qualifications, you know, those and that. How much longer do you want to do?
Um, I, only a week from, um, today, next Wednesday, week, not last day.
So we got to do something in a week.
Well, Dennis, if he leaves, we can do just like the city of Dillon does. Call somebody to come in and do it. I mean, they got people that comes in.
Exactly.
I mean, you know.
Dillon's also a twenty-four-seven operation. You got nine-one-one, jail, uh, sheriff's office.
They got the question we got.
And they, and they have.
They getting by. City don't have to deal with nine-one-one neither, does it? Yeah, but nine-one-one's already under contract, just couldn't hear that.
And, and sheriff.
And sheriff. So, so let me ask this first. So nine-one-one, like if server goes down or something happens, somebody comes out and fixes that? Yeah.
But only nine-one-one, no, not server. Just, they, they handled our sled stuff and all.
They handled the software as what you get now, right?
On Bridge, they can only handle the nine-one-one, the cab system down there, which deals with five computers, with servers, network switches, firewall.
So let's say after Danny leaves, just for general speaking, I mean, I want to say the camera. Let's just say a lightning storm hits and knocks out half the computers in Dillon, what we do? Danny?
Oh.
After you're gone, let's just say you have a huge lightning storm somewhere. It knocked out half the servers and the computers. What do you do? All Mr. Doug Miller, he come over there and fix that.
They would be able to do that because, uh, you're talking about equipment.
That would be harder to view now. That's the one he do, they down there for.
And so, um, that's where Bridge Tech also is, uh, state procurement certified. They're already there. They can know, they know to purchase equipment that is, um, state contract.
Like I said from day one, need someone on the ground to start with.
Let, let me ask you. Is that your suggestion, what we do?
What's that, sir?
That, that agreement with Bridge Tech?
Yes, that is, because I've used them for ten years. They are a fantastic corporation. They're Johnny on the spot, they know what they're doing. They constantly, uh, all of their people undergo testing and certifications to keep them up to date for, I mean, because I have a degree in information security. And theirs do too. And they have their certifications to back it up also, like I do. And it's constant that they have to keep them up.
But could we, Tim, could we get a copy of the contract, what they managed to give us? I mean, what you talking?
Be nice.
Yeah, that would be, I'm looking for the contract.
If I stopped by yesterday to read the contract.
I didn't even get one last night. We talked on Sunday, we didn't even see until today. We ain't heard, heard this until today. Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, so you adopted the guy. You adopted the guy.
I was here the other day, make that, you know, because I was making.
See, I mean.
We have read the contract.
We, we read the contract.
If you, I can read it, I don't understand it.
I promise you, you'll read it, I promise you.
I can process.
Hey, I promise if you'll read.
And then we can hire you.
That'd be great.
Wait a minute, Steve, I promise if you'll read it, there's a different cost if he brings a man or don't bring a man.
I mean, body was all about hiring somebody.
So the nine, so the ninety-eight, so the ninety-eight hundred dollars a month is going to put a person on.
That's what he told us.
Going to put a person here.
Yeah.
And then we'll be local first.
Uh, requires a motion.
I'll tell you what we're going to do. We can spend that money that easy. The sheriff works here, he lay out. We're going to get the sheriff some money in his budget, we're going to get the clerk of court some.
He had that, his, he had that in the budget already. But now, if you can find money to give anybody, we can give everybody everything that we want if you can find it. Or we can raise taxes, that ain't no problem either.
I'm just saying, we, you know, we got a lot of people wanting stuff, and we've been turning them down, can't get nothing, but.
If you can find the money to get it, I'll give everybody what they want.
Mr. Towns, if you seen this, what they, what they going to put us here, what they not going to put us? Last night, the first night that we received a package, that we didn't have them contracts in there. Now, the other month, when Mr. Daniel Moody was in there to pay for it.
Paid for it. The airport and nothing.
Good, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Mr. Daniel Moody, he said something the other day, going to tell us something about the program, and we're going to help collect money for the county. He had all the contract in our package, but there ain't nothing in Dillon County Council package yesterday says a thing about this hundred and twenty thousand dollars we need to spend. This is a blind here, this is kind of like a blind here. Like I say, Mr. Hopper, I wish he would give us a copy of the contract now. Won't you furnish your whole council a copy?
It's right there.
Where is it?
On the table? That big old book.
Get yourself a make a copy of what we have, and that way we, well, I'm pretty sure that we can spot it out now.
Oh, it's seven copies of that?
Yeah, that way we look at it. Can we put this in executive session, then come out and vote on it?
If that's the case.
That way we can go to contract while we're there.
So the contract.
The contract, not some of that.
Yeah, go over it.
Two years, two years. Subject appropriations.
That we want to be, you know, we have.
Subject appropriations, you got to work there.
I'm going to make a motion, put it in executive session. How does that work, Mr. Towns?
You can make, yeah, you, well, you can make a motion, yeah, you can make a motion, discuss it in executive session.
I make a motion, we revise, adjourn, and discuss that.
Executive session, then we'll come out and all the green will have with you. I'll second.
Make a motion in executive session if you want.
Tell Drew, she can come back in here. Tell Drew to come back in.
I forget the next one. Removal installation of playground equipment bid.
Mr. Chair, members of the county, so we, uh, beat it out the removal of the playground equipment through the school district. And to put it into the various parks that we'll be putting it in, we only received one bid, and that was from well irrigation and playgrounds equipment. Their bid was eighty thousand dollars. So I'm asking council to either approve that bid, or we'll have to move forward. Our staff can't move it. They started moving it, and they tore some of it up, so.
Can we use?
You can use that.
Sacramento.
Flood money for that, yeah.
Do you know how much you have left in that?
It's about three hundred or something.
Three hundred and after its amount, or?
Move in and stop.
Before it's.